Okay, I'm going to call to order the Sparks Planning Commission for Thursday, December 6th, and we'll start with roll call, please.
Commissioner Barrow.
Here.
Commissioner Carey.
President.
Commissioner Blakewell.
Here.
Commissioner Brock.
Here.
Commissioner Fueens.
Here.
Commissioner Peter.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison Hornet.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Alana Rouse.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move along to public comment. This is for an item either on the agenda or not, and you have a maximum of three minutes. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fueens.
On item number 11 under general business, I would like to see if we can move that up to ahead of the public hearing items, ahead of item eight.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fueens, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Brock, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes for the October 30th Planning Commission Study Session?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Fueens.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 30th Planning Session. Commissioner Fueens.
Commissioner Brock, second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to review and possible approval of the minutes for the November 1st Planning Commission Meeting. Take a motion. Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of November 1st, 2018. All 69 minutes of them, or 69 pages of them look good.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Brock is second. Any further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to announcements and committee reports. Mr. Renals.
Madam Renals, Assistant Community Services Director. In terms of the future meeting schedule, I think the next meetings are scheduled for the 20th of this month and then the 3rd of January. We would propose to you that one of those dates be used to address any unfinished business from today's Planning Commission, and that any new cases that we would bring to you would be at the second meeting that was scheduled for the month of January, which would be, I believe, on the 17th.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move along to informational items, and Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly for the commission and public, I handed out, and thank you merely for printing it out, a notice for the hearings. There's going to be public hearings for the environmental impact statement for the Spaghetti Bowl project. Next Wednesday at the Reno Sparks Convention Center from 3:00 to 7:30, there'll be the public hearing on the EIS for the Spaghetti Bowl project. That's a very big project for the entire region, but Sparks in particular could have some impacts. I'd encourage the commission to attend the meeting. If you can't attend the meeting, there's a website, n.spaghetti bowl dot com. You can get a copy of the EIS, and comments will be accepted through January 15th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Next, we'll move along to general business and its briefing on the 2017 Regional Plan Update.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Jeremy Smith and the GIS Coordinator at Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, okay, good. So today, I'm happy to be here to present to you a brief update about how we're doing on the Regional Plan Update. That's a something we do over five years, update the regional plan, and we've been making some good progress lately, and I'll take you through it. So why plan regionally, sort of number one? Because the impacts of growth really know no boundaries. You might live in Washoe County, work in the city of Reno, play here in the city of Sparks. We're constantly traveling around the region, so it's really important that we have one agency that helps to coordinate all of the efforts of the jurisdictions here in this region. And we work with the three jurisdictions, the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, Washoe County, as well as other folks we call, or other agencies rather, affected entities such as the Airport Authority. We also work with the school district, TMA, you know, the university. We try to be as, you know, open-armed as possible when we're talking about this stuff. So this regional plan, here we are updating it. What is it intended to do? Well, number one, it's really a collection of scenario planning, we're pushing that right now with GIS, and policy crafting in an attempt to help manage growth in our region. And one of the main things we're really trying to reintroduce, really back into the regional planning process, is the ability to measure and track our progress towards the policies that we put into the plan. And that really, you'll see a little bit coming forward here with the scenarios, is how we're going to try and do that. And it's in service of this idea of coordination and collaboration among, again, the affected entities and jurisdictions because we all live here together and we have to share this space. So that's the idea. So far, the main sort of thrusts of the plan have been policy evaluation. So we have a plan right now. When you count up all the goals and policies in, there's something like 140 goals and policies. It's pretty arcane and tough to deal with, so we're trying to, to some degree, simplify that. We have a series of goals that have been adopted by our governing board, and I'm going to have those, show you those in a sec here. Also, as part of the scenario planning work I'll talk about, we're working towards an actual land use map, like a master plan land use map inside the regional plan. It's something that isn't there right now. It'll be highly reflective of local jurisdictional master plan maps, but it's something that we're working to build in, again, as a way so we can measure where we're developing and what some of those impacts might be. And finally, we've done a lot of work around issues identification. We know there are concerns in the region, things like traffic, school overcrowding, wastewater treatment facilities, if you've heard about that. So trying to look at a robust take on what are the issues and how can this plan help to address them. So this is a lot, right, one slide, but basically, these are the goals of the regional plan that have been adopted. Number one is really about maintaining the quality of regional living. We have a great quality of life. We want to make sure we're protecting that. Likewise, you know, natural environment continues to pop on our surveys. It's a very important component of this region. We want to make sure that we have policies in the plan that are going to address protecting that. We know we've been through some ups and downs lately. We want to make sure that we can, you know, build for a robust economy going forward and hopefully weather maybe some economic recession-type storms a little better than we have. This is a key one right here, cost and efficiency, just trying to coordinate the facility plans of everyone that's building stuff, right, and the services we're providing as government so that we're not duplicating efforts and that we're all kind of moving in the same direction. Of course, we want to make sure that all of the residents of our community, you know, are being treated fairly, so this idea of equity and diversity comes in. And then, finally, engagement and decision-making, again, kind of about the coordination and cooperation among public agencies, really trying to foster that. So those are the goals, and they have been adopted. Now, as far as the document itself, we're working on kind of a suite of products. At the very highest level, we're looking to have about a four-page document that maybe is a fold-out that has the map in the center and focuses in on the key policies, something that's very approachable, unlike what we have right now. And then down a level from that will be kind of the main documents, and first off, the 2019 Regional Plan itself, which will be pretty graphical, something that's about 20 to 30 pages that you could actually read, maybe even as a resident of the community. And then along with that is something we're calling a policy handbook, where we'll really delve into these new policies we're drafting and how we want to see them implemented. So that's going to be in the handbook. And then finally, we'll have a work plan that goes along with, you know, obviously, we're going to have to continue to work to measure and track the stuff that we're trying to put into the plan. The work is never done, unfortunately, but that's okay, keeps us busy. So those three things in blue are sort of like the mid-level main chunk of this. And then we have below that, I had to call it the sleep aid, if you really want to delve into the details, right, you can have the hundreds of pages of appendices, and we've already written quite a bit of that, but that's all in support of really creating those documents in blue. So several products will be available as part of the plan. Okay, so as far as engagement, this is a great example of us going out, talking about the regional plan, but we've done many things to try to get the word out along the way. We've been working on it for about a year. We've gone to 42 in-person meetings where we, we call them road shows. We were sort of previewing the ideas. We've emailed folks. We've had mailing inserts in TMA mailers, newspapers, flyers. We did some radio spots. The RTC rode ahead. We're trying to get out there as much as we can, and I think that we're coming into a period where we'll have even more engagement because we have more sort of content to sort of talk about. But one of the ways we've really been able to engage the community is through our online surveys using the tool called MetroQuest. And our first survey was great. We got almost 2,000 participants, over 30,000 data points, tons of comments. And this was one of the main findings was, what are the top regional concerns in terms of issues identification? And infrastructure and the natural environment really popped, as well as accommodating growth, and those things sort of go together. In fact, we did a little bit of an exercise last night. We had a big meeting at the Discovery Museum where we asked folks, once again, to sort of weigh in on these concerns, and we got a pretty similar, we did dots, you know, they put dots on the bars, pretty similar distribution, although there was quite a bit more dots than would be indicated here around regional coordination. So maybe folks are recognizing that the more we can work together, you know, it's an important factor of this, and we should be trying to do that. We also looked at trade-offs, just quickly. You can see those orange boxes all kind of leaning towards the right, asking questions like, do you think the region should grow out and build more subdivisions out to the edges, or should we try to grow up? And it seems like the predominant message is to try to grow up. What a type of housing does our region need? We're looking for more choice. With regard to transportation, looks like there is a slight bias towards more public transportation, but this one was pretty 50/50. A lot of folks thought maybe we needed more roads, more capacity as well. And then finally, with investing our public dollars, there's a pretty overwhelming sentiment that we should be trying to optimize and maintain the existing infrastructure stuff we've already invested in for our community, rather than putting in a bunch of new stuff. We went through the over, you know, several thousand comments. Actually, one of the interns did this, which was great, but they went and read every single one, and these are what popped, housing affordability, roadway congestion, growing too quickly, schools, and concerns about sprawl. So those are things that were obviously, when we were thinking about crafting policy and looking at these scenarios, we're concerned about that. Here we were last night at the Discovery Museum. People actually came, so that was neat. And finally, we have a couple of surveys coming out. One is that TMRPA scenarios at MetroQuest.com. That one's live now, and that's a chance for anyone to go in and, you know, digitally look at the four scenarios. I'll show you in a sec, and kind of compare how they perform on a series of metrics, and we'll hope to get quite a bit of feedback there. Really, again, using that process to try to help us create that land use map that we're going to build into the new plan. And we're also going to release a survey on the environment. That one is still in process. Okay, so I'm moving pretty quick, but if you have questions, don't be afraid to stop me. Onto the scenario planning. This is what I've been working on a lot for the past, I would say, two months and even more, but really, kind of burning the midnight oil to get through it. We've created four scenarios of the future, where we look at housing unit growth, where it happens, what kind of housing units we're seeing, as well as job growth. And these are the four scenarios. Quickly, number one and two are from our existing housing study, kind of went through and made sure, we took out everything that's built since we published that study, and we're looking at 20 years of growth here. The classic scenario, number one, is if we just try to build the same way we've built over the past 20 years, out over the next 20 years, right? So there's a certain pattern, certain type of product mix that we got in that. Scenario two, we said, hey, what if we just get a little bit different than we were in the past 20 years? And we put about 25% of the new units inside the McCarran Ring Road, as well as Legends actually out in Sparks. So that was just outside the McCarran Ring Road. And so that's another scenario that we were examining. And then with three and four, we decided to get even a little bit more, I don't know, kind of ambitious with modeling the future. With scenario three, we looked at trying to locate areas that had good access to infrastructure, you know, ideally with capacity, and try to focus in on those greenfield or developing areas that fit that bill, and even allow for a little bit of upzoning, so densification of products within there. That's not something we're actually saying that we would do, but we're experimenting to see what the impacts are. And then finally, scenario four was a kind of a classic infill, kind of working to build in the core of our community in our established neighborhoods. All of this is in service of trying to discover what potential impacts are before we make decisions on how we grow. Rather than be reactive and see what problems come down the pike, hopefully we can use a tool like this modeling work we've been creating to really get out in front of it and say, you know, give us a reason why we would make one decision over another. All right, so without further ado, this is the pattern of the classic scenario. The black line in this map is the Trucking Meadows Services area. That's the existing services area from the 2012 Regional Plan. Every single blue hexagon or dot-looking thing is an area that a unit was modeled into, a new unit. The darker the hue, the more units were modeled in those areas. And so what we see in this particular scenario is quite a bit of growth on the edges of our service area, right? And it really does line up with existing entitlements, you know, where we have planned unit developments and active tentative maps. So a little bit of a change to the McCarran scenario, very similar set of assumptions driving where things are going, except for that big change to put 25% into the core. And if you sort of go back and forth, I think you can see that areas in Verde and the southeast, also sort of up in the north valleys, you see a little bit less realizing and more densification and more red hexagons inside the core. Now, onto the smart greenfield scenario. This is the one where we were trying to really try to optimize where we would build in large tracts of vacant land that we had infrastructure proximity and capacity. And I think what you might be able to see here is that fewer hexagons are actually turned on. It's about 900 of these versus about 2,000 in terms of the classic scenario. So by allowing a little bit of densification, we can actually achieve the same amount of growth with less land being turned on, if you will, less acres being consumed. And I should back up and say that the target number of units that we're shooting for in all of these scenarios, they're all the same. It's based on a population forecast. We do the consensus forecast, which is saying right now that we can expect around 107,000 people over the next 20 years. That translates to around 43,000 dwelling units. So in each of these scenarios, that's what we've been putting onto the landscape. Finally, the infill scenario. This one, we really were focused in on trying to build units in our mixed-use and core areas and in our established neighborhoods. So where the greenfield scenario had more of a focus on newly developing vacant areas, the infill scenario focused more on areas that are already built today. So we upped the amount of redevelopment that was occurring, and just tried to really maximize what we could get on any of the vacant parcels in these areas. You might notice, though, that we had to turn more hexagons on in the infill scenario, and that's really because most of it's already built in a lot of these places, and we're just getting one or two acres, you know, to come online in the model. Again, all of these are theoretical. None of these are where we're actually going to go. We don't think any of these define the future. But again, we want to look at four scenarios that are different enough that we can see differential impacts of growing one way versus another, and that's going to be useful in crafting policy and creating that land use map. So again, different patterns have different impacts, and that's really what we've been trying to get to over the past few months, is actually creating this scenario so we can look at what those impacts might be. We've designed a set of 18 evaluation criteria, and these are linked to our regional planning goals. I'll just go ahead and show you that right now. Here we have quite a bit going on in this slide, but across the top is broadly the six or five, rather, five goals that we've adopted. Along the first column there on the left are the measures themselves. If they're in dark black, that means that I've actually been able to do it, create them. And if they're in gray, it means they're in process. So just quickly going through them, land utilization, this is about how many acres of land are we using. Infill development, this is a sort of a tieback to our NRS, where it basically says we should promote growth in established neighborhoods. And so we're trying to measure that by looking at where, you know, where are these units going in terms of neighborhoods that existed prior to 2000. Housing mix is what kind of products are we building? Are we building a lot of large lot products, or are we building more condos, townhomes, single-family attached products? What's that mix? And that's different in all the scenarios. With affordable housing, we're trying to put together the work we've been doing to forecast units with the good work that Enterprise Community Partners, TMRPA and TMHC have been doing on the strategy for housing affordability, which should be available very soon. They've done a census tract level analysis of opportunity for affordable housing, and so we're going to overlay our units and see how that goes together. We also did sort of a poor man's Zillow calculation. We created our own Zillow, so we were out there valuing properties, not out anywhere, just in the GIS. And so we were able to sort of count up based on recent sales prices. How many dollars if you were to, you know, buy all the new 43,000 units? How is that different across scenarios? And then this next one's been somewhat troublesome, but we finally wrote the script to do it. So we're going to be able to create a spatial representation at two spatial scales, one mile and a 10-mile scale, of where we put new units, what are the sort of opportunities to work near where you live, putting those new units on the ground. So kind of a jobs-housing balance. The next four are all transportation metrics that came right out of the transportation demand model from the RTC. So we had to take our scenarios, fit them into the RTC format, run it through the TransCAD model, and get those results out. That's been a, it's always an interesting, fun thing. So it's still kind of preliminary, but we're looking closely at that. Other infrastructure, we've been able to say, okay, where are we building the new units, and what sewer treatment facility would they flow to? Just counting that up, and then, you know, folks that know about the capacities at those various regional facilities can have that information as they plan for those facility upgrades. Also, water hookup costs, we can count that up. That's a dollar amount that really translates into home prices for the buyer. And then also, where are we generating students? You know, if we build one way versus another, we're putting new units, some in one part of town versus another, that has impacts that are differential on our schools. We have a lot of data on where students are now, how many units are existing, where the schools are at in terms of capacity. So we're actually generating students of the future. We have a couple of other measures that are still in process. Air quality, that is sort of a handoff from the transportation demand model to the health districts moves model. So that work is being done next week with the RTC planners to get that ready to run through moves, and we'll see what that tells us. And then I'm working to really take work that's been done throughout the region and develop a way to kind of measure our unit growth in terms of access to parks or some sort of park zone and green space. That's something that's underway as well. Finally, we had two sort of priority lenses for how we're developing, especially scenarios three and four. One was assumptions around proximity to infrastructure. That's what we're calling smart greenfield. And another was really more of a core-oriented growth pattern, and that we're calling live, work, play. And so we're looking back at how do each of the four scenarios measure up against the performance through those development priority lenses that we have. So those are the criteria that we've been able to come up with. I guarantee you that as we craft the TMRPA work plan, we will come up with others that we will have to work on as we go forward. Just quickly, a couple of the stats, you know, if you want to look at the four scenarios. Total acres of land, residential land consumed to achieve the 43,000 units, you can see right away that the classic scenario, we need about 17,000 acres versus around 6,500 or 6,000 acres for the kind of more densified scenarios, three and four infill and smart greenfield. This was the breakdown by housing types, and what we have across the bottom here is a spectrum from very low density on our left to the high-density products on our right. And once again, you can see that the classic scenario, if we mimic what we've done, we're going to end up building more of these low-density products. So we went ahead in our creation of the other scenarios to try to build some more dense products in there and see what those impacts might be. This was my poor man's Zillow. So if you add up all of the sales prices, right, of the 43,000 units in each of the scenarios, this is what it would cost to buy them all today if they existed. One of the examples of vehicle miles traveled are the transportation stats. This one's vehicle miles traveled. It's a pretty common sort of transportation metric, and I think what you can see is that both the greenfield, the classic and the greenfield scenario, have the highest VMT per capita. And I went ahead and divided all of the vehicle miles traveled that came out of the transportation demand model by the total population at 2038, which is our target here. It's 558,000 people. We could look at maybe limiting that by drivers. If we come up with a percentage of that 558 that actually drove, and work on these stats a bit. But what you can see is if we build to the core a little more, we drive a little less. Not that surprising. Hookup fee costs work similarly. The hookup fee structure for water really is geographic, in so much that if you're in the center of town, the hookup fee is zero. And as you move out to the edges, the cost to maintain the infrastructure, put in the required tanks and lines and whatnot, costs a little more. And so it costs more to hook up to the water system, and so this is reflecting that pattern. And then here is wastewater treatment zones. This is, there's five regional wastewater facilities in our region. You can see the big green area is the TMA, the Trucking Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. That's the big one. And, you know, I like to point to this graph at the far right, where you see the stair stepping of that yellow, green, red, blue. That's basically showing that if we, you know, how we realize these units and where we realize, and the burden on each wastewater facility treatment will be variable. And if we, you know, as we go to the edges, less of it's going into that TMA big green blob, and vice versa. Okay, so that was pretty rapid, though. Next steps. We're going to analyze feedback. We took some of this information, most of it, to the Regional Planning Governing Board and the Regional Planning Commission. I'm sure you guys, some of you remember. And we got a lot of your feedback. We did play some activity games where we put dots on stuff and got comments. We're collating all of that. We also got a bunch of feedback last night that we're bringing together. And so we're going to take all of that, as well as the results from our survey and any other public engagement, and try to use that as one of the bases for building the preferred land use map, that preferred alternative. There's a lot of work going on with drafting new policy language and policy review. I'm less involved with that part, honestly, but we are working to marry the mapping exercise and the policy construction. So that's something we're really working to draft, actually just draft the plan and get a version of it out there so folks can start marking it up and saying what they like and don't like. And then we're going to continue to engage and get the word out, and just keep people apprised of where we're at as we keep going and try to complete this thing early next year. If you want to learn more, you can go to plan@truckymeados.org. There you will find a link to our new scenario survey. I hope that you all take that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy. Do any Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, Jeremy, for being here, and thanks, staff, for setting this presentation up. I'm curious what, you know, if you have at this point a timeline for when the update will go through the approval process and when we would have the update in hand.
Yeah. We are, we're working feverishly. We have a target date of, I believe it's Regional Planning Governing Board meeting in April, maybe it's the 14th. That would be what we're trying to hit. So that means that we need to get a draft out as soon as possible so folks can start looking at it. But we're going to keep pushing as hard as we can so that we get this thing wrapped up. I think what we realize is that there's a lot of good work to be done to continue this dialogue around regional planning, but we need to get this new plan adopted and really, you know, get past that hurdle. So we're pushing to get it done in the spring.
Thank you very much for coming again.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you guys so much.
So much. Appreciate the presentation.
Have a wonderful night.
Next, we're going to move along to public hearing items. So we're going to start with PCN 18-0059, consideration and possible action, request of conditional use permit for unpaid parking lot.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins, planner. PCN 18-0059 is a request for a conditional use permit for an unpaved parking lot on 4.32 acres in the industrial zoning district for a period of up to one year at 1750 Briarly. The site is located northwest of Vista and Iate, outlined in cyan here in the image exhibit one. Subject property is landlocked, screened on all four sides by other parcels. It's accessible through the 32-acre UPS site just to the north. UPS applied for and was granted a grading permit to pave the lot for this use, but thereafter decided that they wanted to wait until spring with warmer weather to do the paving, at which point we suggested that you would need to apply for a conditional use permit for unpaid parking for a period of up to one year. So the normal CUP procedure allows applicant in two years to establish a use. This CUP is a little different in that it requires that the duration be limited to one year per the requirements of the zoning code for unpaved parking. This particular CUP, like I said, will expire in one year from the approval. This allows the applicant time to pave the lot, but at which time they will then be permitted by right to park on the site. So there's five required findings for a CUP. I'm going to go back to this image here. Finding C1 requires conformance with the comprehensive plan. The land use designation is industrial. The use of this parcel is trailer parking associated with UPS's shipping-receiving warehousing business. Staff finds to be compatible with that land use designation. The comprehensive plan land use goals relevant to this proposal include MG1 to support economic vitality by providing a non-residential land use base. Goal MG2 requires diversity in the land use mix, providing commercial, industrial, employment areas throughout the city. Finding C2 requires compatibility with surrounding uses. Properties to the east and to the south are multi-tenant warehousing businesses. The property to the west, this oddly shaped property here, is the Real City Garden Center, which is a retail facility where they sell larger-scale dirt, gravel, landscaping materials. And then the property to the north is, like I said, the 32-acre UPS facility with all the trucks and trailers there. And so staff finds the And so staff finds the proposed use to be compatible with those surrounding uses, not to cause any sort of, you know, issues there. Finding C3 addresses the impairment of natural resources. The applicant will be providing a gravel surface on the lot for the temporary period of one year or until the paving takes place in the spring to minimize impacts on the natural landscape. Finding C4 requires staff to address any other identified impacts. Applicant will conform to the city's environmental control standards for unpaid parking, which includes street sweeping and trackout prevention. Staff received no comments from other outside agencies. Finding C5 requires proper noticing to the public. Notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on November 21st, and the 33 property owners within 500 feet were notified as well, and staff received no comments from any of them. So staff is recommending approval of the CUP, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Okay.
I'm going to go with Madam Chair since I heard Mr. Carey use that term, so I will use that. Madam Chair, members of the fellow commissioners, for the record for tonight, my name is Ronald King, Ron King. I'm resident of the City of Sparks. And tonight, my comments are not to give you an impression that I am opposed to this proposal. What my mission is here tonight is, as I served many years representing the City of Sparks and several legislative and advisory commissions and councils in years past, I'm trying to renew my vigor in being involved in what's happening in my city and making sure that information, documents, verifications are timely and current. And that was what I always demanded. And on this particular situation, I think there is something that was always frustrating to me even back in those years, and it still goes on today, is that our developers, our large industries, private citizens, whatever, will go ahead with ideas, developments before the final and complete process of permitting or hearings are complete or up to date. Now, as of a few hours ago, from an elevated position, not on the lot or on the site, I observed this site. What you have explained in your packet is not really what I consider timely. Because that site is not vacant, the site is currently being used and is full of trailers. They are already moving traders and trucks in that, onto that site and in and out of that site. The seal that they allegedly put on there has already, to keep the dust down, has already been disturbed because of the heaviness of the vehicles. And so as you vote, and I can assume and probably know what your vote is going to be, is I just wanted to make sure that you as commissioners and as a group that was foreseeing this and calling it a proposed site and calling it vacant is corrected. Because what happens is, as I said before, it happens many times, is that people go ahead and do things before they get their permits or they go through the entire process. It frustrates me. And as a citizen of Sparks, I don't think it's right. So I'm not opposed to this, but remember that it is already a site being used. It is not vacant. And I think that it is important that you as commissioners and as a group and staff know that as a few hours ago, that is active. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is the applicant here and would they like to make a presentation?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Ellie Reader with Lemison Associates. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant. So I just wanted to provide a little background on the project and some context for this conditional use permit request. So UPS typically leases off-site parking, parking lot space during the holiday months to keep up with the demand they have during the holiday season. So rather than lease parking lot space, this year UPS planned to use vacant land on their existing lot located off of Vista Boulevard. They were approved for a grading permit for the parking lot and finished construction of the lot with the exception of the top coat. So the top coat, also referred to as Cape Seal, requires that steady temperature above 60 degrees for at least 48 hours. So due to uncertainty of weather, they need to wait until spring to finalize the construction of that parking lot and put that final Cape Seal down. So our request before you today is to allow them to use this parking lot on a temporary basis to get them through the holiday season. And then once the weather warms up, they'll be, the plan will be to put that seal down and finish the parking lot. So both myself and the design engineer are here tonight, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do any commissioners have any questions? You good? Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll jump in if there's no other questions. I concur with staff's recommendation on this. I agree with their proposed findings. So I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit associated with PCN 18-0059, adopting findings C1 through C5 and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the four conditions of approval.
Commissioner Brock, second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
I want to discuss.
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson.
Is there any possible reason that this permit is good for a year? Is there any possible reason that you could finish paving that come spring instead of using it for the whole year?
Commissioner Peterson, who are you addressing the question to?
Staff can answer that.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Peterson, could you repeat that?
Well, there's nothing stopping them from going ahead and still paving that before the year's up of this permit, right?
Correct. We're giving them the duration of the year to complete that paving. And it could take place tomorrow, but they're waiting until the spring for the weather.
Well, I understand that. And I understand the season we're in right now that you can't possibly do it. And also, it's Christmas season where their business dictates an awful lot of use.
Yeah.
And I can understand that. But I also would want to be sure that they do not fulfill the full year if it gave a good season and a good time to pave it, to complete the paving of that, so that this doesn't go through for a longer period.
Sure. I mean, I guess for all intents and purposes, they would have the duration of the year to complete it, so it could take until the winter if they chose.
Okay. That's all I want to be sure, is I want to be sure that they have nothing holding them back from paving that when the time comes right and present.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 18-0057, consideration, possible action on a request for conditional use permit for a major recreational facility. And Mr. Orin Ellis.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to address the planning commission for just a minute before Mr. Crittenden makes his presentation on this next agenda item. As Mr. Crittenden noted at Tuesday's study session, city staff did not provide a recommendation in our staff report as we typically do. The staff report states that staff would either make a recommendation to you prior to tonight's meeting or during tonight's meeting, or alternatively propose that the planning commission consider continuing this item to a future planning commission meeting. So I think it's appropriate at this juncture before Mr. Crittenden makes his presentation that we make you aware that the staff recommendation is in fact that you do continue this item to a future meeting. Having said that, the intent of doing that is for two reasons. First is to provide staff additional time to understand some of the impacts from the proposed use, in particular, the sound impacts from concerts, and to be, you know, frankly for staff to be better prepared to be able to understand them. It's a technical matter, the sound analysis, that frankly is a little out of our ordinary reach. And while the applicant's acoustical consultant provided responses to some questions that staff had posed to them, those responses in fact raised a couple of other questions. And then in addition, the city received and the planning commission has received an acoustical analysis submitted by the owner of an adjacent property, which also raises some questions. So towards that end, staff is working on retaining a qualified consultant to advise the city regarding the assumptions and methodology and conclusions in the study submitted by the applicant. So that's reason number one. Second, you know, this item had been agendized for this evening and notices had been sent out. And staff believes it would be useful for Mr. Crittenden to present the case, for the applicant to make their presentation, for the planning commission to take public comment, and then for you to question staff and the applicant. And I think hopefully that will result in airing all of the questions, concerns, and ideas for the project and maybe possible conditions of approval or mitigations, so that when the planning commission takes action on this, whether, you know, if it's not tonight, per our recommendation, at the next meeting, we're able to really advise you so that you can make a well-informed decision. So that's, I just wanted to get that out before Mr. Crittenden makes his presentation.
Commissioner Peterson.
It's continuation. Don't we have to give a date to when it's, have you a date in mind for that?
Well, I think if you could allow us to get through this, and, you know, I think we'll have a sense at the end of the discussion, if you will, this evening, as to, you know, what the issues are and what, you know, the complexity is. And then we can give you a recommendation as to a date. So the options would be the 17, I'm sorry, the 20th of this month, which would be two weeks from this evening. That may not be enough time. A second option would be on January 3rd, and that would give us basically about four weeks. And that might suffice. I think that very well might suffice. And in that instance, we would envision that that would be the only item on the agenda that evening. And then the third option would be to push it out to the January 17th meeting, but I think maybe that's getting a little long in the tooth. So I think more than likely, our recommendation would be that you continue it to the January 3rd meeting. But if you'd like, we can decide that at the end of this item.
Thank you.
Chair Vanderwell, members of the planning commission, IME and Crittenden, senior planner. This item is a conditional use permit request to allow a major recreational facility, specifically a outdoor concert amphitheater, on a site approximately 2.25 acres in size and located at 1040 Victorian Avenue. You can see the site here on the map, outlined in cyan, with Victorian Avenue on the south, 10th Street on the east, Victorian Plaza Circle on the west, and C Street on the north. This location was operated as the Silver Club from 1983 to 2001, and then was subsequently operated as Bourbon Square from 2013 to 2015, and has remained vacant since that time. This site is located in the MUD, the Mixed Use District, in the downtown Victorian Square Land Use District, as can be seen here on this land use map. Major recreational facilities are permitted, subject to a conditional use permit in this zoning district, and entertainment uses are listed as an appropriate primary use on sites in the downtown Victorian Square Land Use Designation. The applicant has proposed a outdoor entertainment and concert venue with approximately 8,600 seats. The definition of major recreational facility in the Sparks Municipal Code includes entertainment facilities and amphitheaters. So staff felt that this request did fit that bill of a major recreational facility. The proposal would be limited to 10 events a year, including four to six concerts in the months of June through October. The proposed concert venue would also be used for portions of special events, such as the Rib Cookoff and Hot August Nights. Large concerts would not be held during these special events, as the venue would be used in connection with those events. The site will be bounded on all sides by a six-foot decorative wrought iron or masonry block wall. The site has some street trees in the right of way, which can be seen best on this map. You can see the street trees in the right of way, and there will be additional landscaping added to both the west and the east sides. The site is oriented with the stage on the east side of the site and the stadiums and the seating on the west side of the site. Access to the site or for admissions would be from the south side of the site along Victorian Avenue. In this area, the sidewalk is a minimum of 30 feet wide and is the most logical place for pedestrian access due to the width of the sidewalk in that area, but also because the majority of the parking for this project will be to the south of the site. So crossing from that location makes the most sense. The site will have temporary restroom facilities proposed are initially kind of located in the corners of the site. The applicant has discussed the possibility of building permanent restroom facilities. Permanent restroom facilities will require that the applicant submit a sewer study to look at the nature of that intermittent but high intensity sewer flow and the impacts that that will have on our sewer system and to verify that it's sufficient or if there are any needed capacity upgrades, that they would be responsible for those. There is areas listed on the site plan here for vendors and concessions. Those vendors or concessions will have to be permitted as any other vendor concession site would have to be. Sight lighting is predominantly on the front of the stage and the back of the seating That sight lighting will have to meet the requirements of Sparks Municipal Code Section 20.04.007, which does address lighting, and a photometrics plan will have to be submitted with building permits to show that the lighting meets the requirements of the Sparks Municipal Code. Lighting associated with events should also meet the intent of this section. It doesn't really address those kind of lighting at the events, like laser light shows or spotlights or those kind of things. But the intent should be met and those lighting events should not be cast onto adjacent buildings adjacent to the site. Large video screens are likely to be used as part of the concert events. Any such streams, any such screens shall comply with the Sparks Municipal Code Section 20.04.010i6, which is the section of the code which addresses digital displays associated with signs, and that's an intensity standard. Staff recommended that as a condition in order to try to limit the impact of the brightness of those kind of lights shining on adjacent properties. Additionally, we have suggested in Condition 11 that digital display screens associated with any event must be turned off the end of the presentation or the performance. The nature of this use is intermittent, and while the impact associated with each event will be substantial, it is important to note that the number of large events per year is limited to 10, not including the Rib Cookoff, Hot August Nights, Southern Fair on the Square, and the Sparks Municipal Sparks. Excuse me. Minimum parking requirements per the Sparks Municipal Code for this use is one space per acre, or per acre, I'm sorry, one space for 200 square feet of event space. The entirety of this site, the 2.25 acres, would only demand at that ratio 490 spaces. But the parking code specifically says that the administrator may require spaces in addition to those specified in this section per, if special circumstances exist, a concert venue with approximately 8,600 seats, we determined was a special circumstance. And so we did require the staff, our staff did require the applicant to submit a parking study. The applicant's parking study determined that the proposed concert venue would require 1,422 parking spaces. This, the exhibit up in front of you now does show that kind of seats tabulation, and they did submit an additional parking study that showed where they would provide that parking. They did provide, showed that they could provide 1,175 parking spaces on existing nugget parking areas. areas, surface and structured parking. That left them with the 247 parking spaces that they're, they're short in that analysis. They are proposing that Nugget staff would park on a lot in Reno and be shuttled to the site, which is what they already do during large special events like the Rib Cookoff. Sparks Municipal Code Section 20.04.009B2 allows for parking demand to be met within one-quarter mile of a site in the mixed-use district. If we look at, sorry, this parking buffer, buffer exhibit, the kind of purple line is a quarter-mile from the site. The cyan line is the site, and the blue lines are the existing Nugget parking. You can see here that one of the surface lots and about two-thirds of another one are outside of that quarter-mile parking distance. Essentially about 506 parking spaces are outside of that quarter-mile buffer, but all of the onsite or all of the adjacent Nugget parking spaces are within half a mile. Staff believes that because this venue will only be used a fairly limited number of days per year, and that because the parking lot in Reno is already used during special events, we believe that this parking plan is sufficient to meet the needs of this use. One of the biggest concerns regarding this proposed use are the impacts of amplified sound on the surrounding properties. The applicant's acoustic study estimated that the sound levels at the nearest residential buildings will be 85 to 90 decibels and have an impact of 10 to 20 decibels above ambient sound levels inside the nearest residential structures. And the acoustical study states that this impact will be noticeable, is the word that they use. Staff reviewed the applicant's acoustical study and had directed several questions to the applicant, and the applicant had submitted some responses to those questions, and those have been handed out and have been posted on the city's website. Staff, as mentioned by Assistant Director Ornellis, is in the process of trying to engage an acoustical engineer to help inform us about these, these studies. This is a form of engineering that we have, a staff engineer that can, can kind of review that for us. And so we're looking to get that outside comment to, to give us some additional information on that analysis. So section, to talk some more about amplified sound, section 9.42.07OB limits the amplified sound to the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and no amplified sound being allowed on Sundays or on legal holidays. Additionally, amplified sound is also restricted to no more than 15 decibels above ambient sound levels at the property line. It's important to note that the planning commission does not have the authority to approve events that do not comply with these limitations on amplified sound. However, section 9.42.02OB allows the applicant to operate outside of these limitations if they have an approved special event permit. Specifically, the applicant is exempt to Chapter 9.42 if they have a special event permit pursuant to Chapter 9.34. That's specifically out of that, that's actually 9.42.02OB. That's specifically what it says. That chapter is exempt if you're applied under the other chapter. However, neither planning staff nor the planning commission can guarantee that a special event permit will be granted. But as we have many special events in downtown and in this area, planning staff felt it was reasonable to assume that a special event permit for concerts at this venue that exceeds the limitations of 9.42, that section of the code would be granted. It's reasonable for us to assume that that, that could happen. And staff believes that considering the impacts of an event from, that runs from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., that would produce roughly 90 decibels at the adjacent properties was necessary to determine if it was compatibility in the case, in this case. Any event at this venue that would operate after 8:00 p.m. or be louder than 15 decibels at the property line would need to be approved and permitted through a special events permit. Victorian Avenue between, we'll go back to the originals, the city map. So Victorian Avenue between Victorian Plaza Circle and Tenth Street will need to be closed during many of these events due to the large number of people that will be crossing that from the parking to the south into the event and then out of the event and down to the south afterwards will need to be closed. Any closure of Victorian Avenue or any city street will be required or necessitate a special event permit. Special permits applications are submitted to the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department. Applications are reviewed at a city services meeting that includes representation, representatives from parks, fire, police, and community services. Applications are reviewed to address public safety concerns and determine the level of city involvement necessary for each proposed event. Once the level of city involvement is established, an estimate of the cost of city services will be provided to, for the event, oh, okay, I'm sorry. An estimate of the cost of city services to be provided for the event is prepared to set fees to be paid by the event producer. It essentially allows the city to cost recover for all the services that we provide. Staff has received public comment from Jay Witt of Silverwing Development regarding this request. Silverwing Development is the developer of the Bridges project, which isn't shown in this aerial. It's just the aerial is too old. The Bridges projects are nearing completion directly to the west of the project and also the Deco project, which is on the old C Street parking garage directly to the west. Mr. Witt expressed concerns about sound levels and how amplified sound and event lighting could impact residents of the Silverwing properties as well as potential vagrancy issues at this site when it is not being used, like during the winter. As staff sees it, there are three main ways to look at this request today. One is that the planning commission could determine that the proposed conditions of approval and the limitations on the number of duration, number of and duration of events provide sufficient mitigation to consider the project compatible with surrounding uses. Or number two, that there are additional mitigation and conditions that could make this project compatible with the surrounding land uses. Or three, that this project is not compatible with the surrounding land uses. At this time, as mentioned by Assistant Director Ornellis, staff does not feel that we have enough information and understanding regarding the acoustic impacts or any potential mitigation measures to make a recommendation of anything other than continuance. As mentioned, it continues to the January third planning commission meeting would give staff, we think, enough time to, to get an understanding and to make a better recommendation to the planning commission. There are five findings associated with the conditional use permit. Finding C1 is that the request as submitted and conditioned is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Goals and policies of the comprehensive plan that are relevant to this proposal include, sorry, it is really cold. Goal MG1, support economic vitality by providing a non-residential land use base. Goal MG2, foster diversity in the land use mix, including residential, commercial, industrial, employment, and recreational areas citywide. Goal MG4, to facilitate infill and redevelopment. Goal MG5, prioritize development and enhance the downtown Sparks Center. Policy MG2, encourage reinvestment in existing employment centers, which includes Victorian Avenue, the Victorian Avenue corridor. Policy CF1, when reviewing new development, the city will not approve an application unless city services can be provided at acceptable levels. Policy C4, require sidewalks for pedestrians on all street networks within the city. And Policy CC2, to promote a mix of uses, including restaurants and shopping, to create a vibrant downtown district at Victorian Square. And Goal EV1, to grow and diversify Sparks' economy. The use of this site as a major recreational facility slash concert venue would permit an activity that is not currently available in Sparks at this scale. As a non-residential land use that also diversifies the economy of Sparks, this proposed use supports Goal MG1, Goal MG2, Policy CC2, and Goal EV1. Proposed concert amphitheater will be located in downtown Sparks. The current building, which has been vacant for years, will be demolished and replaced with a facility that represents a considerable reinvestment in Victorian Avenue corridor in support of Goals MG4, Goal MG5, and Policy MG12. As the site redevelops into a concert venue, the adjacent sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructures will be maintained and enhanced in support of Policy C4. All required city services necessary for the development of this site as a concert amphitheater are available at the site in con, in conformance with Policy CF1, though, as mentioned earlier, improvements to the sewer infrastructure may be required when the permanent restroom facilities are constructed. And both police and fire departments have expressed concerns about the ability to provide event-specific services. However, those issues will be specifically addressed through the special event permit process for each proposed, proposed event. Finding C2 requires that the request is compatible with the existing or permitted land uses of adjacent properties. As, as I said before, this site is downtown and is surrounded by a mix of commercial and residential uses in the downtown Victorian Square area of the Mixed Use District, where a high level of activity is encouraged and desired. This area already hosts a number of major special events each year, including events that are similar to or larger in scale like the Rib Cookoff. A concert venue of this size will be a major attraction, and increased activity at concert events should have a positive impact on neighboring businesses on event days, particularly eating and drinking establishments. As discussed in Finding C1, adding an entertainment venue like this to the one proposed for this site is clearly consistent with and would advance numerous comprehensive plan goals and policies. It is also clear that the proposed concert venue will generate noise, light, traffic, and parking impacts discussed earlier, which the conditions of approval are intended to mitigate. The impacts on adjacent residential land uses, specifically sound and noise, are major concerns. The proposed conditions of approval seek to reduce these impacts, in particular by imposing a limit of 10 major events per year exclusive to existing events. In addition, the special event permit process would allow city staff to manage concerns on an iterative or case-by-case basis as events occur, refining requirements and mitigation measures as necessary based on previous events. Finding C3, impairment of natural resources. The site was developed as the Silver Club in 1983. The redevelopment of the site as a concert venue will not impair or further impair the natural resources. Finding C4 is to address, requires that we address identified impacts. Impacts are car, parking, lighting, and appearance and design were just addressed earlier. I'm sorry, I'm really cold. Impacts addressing sanitation will be addressed through Condition 10, which would require the trash be removed and the site cleaned no more than two days after an event. Additionally, temporary restrooms cannot be delivered more than three days prior to an event and must be removed no more than two days after an event. The only identified impact that staff is not sure if it has been adequately addressed is that of sound. Determining to what degree this impact can be reasonably mitigated beyond the limitations of the number and duration of events per year is, is the reason for staff's recommendation of continuance at this time. And then finally, finding C5 is about public notice. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on November 21st. 63 notices were mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the site on November 20th. Then the planning commission functions as required parking, or requires as the parking, require, functions as a required public hearing for this item. As mentioned by Assistant Director Ornellis, staff is recommending continuance of this item to the January 3rd planning commission meeting. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, would they like to do a presentation?
Just want to make sure I have the controls. Good evening, Madam Chair, and Commissioners and City Staff. Anthony A. Marnell III for the record. I am the owner of the Sparks Nugget. Before I get started, I would like to thank you for, for having me here this evening and just provide a brief overview. We've been in Sparks since May of 2016. We started looking at the Sparks Nugget actually a year prior to that. I'll never forget my, my first meeting with Mayor Martini and staff on how welcoming he was, but he also had this curious look on his face like, are you the next owner of the Sparks Nugget that's not going to do what he said he was going to do? At the time, I told the mayor that we were here to deliver what we said we could and set the expectations reasonable and then tried to beat them. We have, at the time, we had promised a $25 million remodel to the Sparks Nugget. As of this morning, we are at $52 million in remodel, and by this time next year, we will be at $75 million of remodel. We will have redone the entire West Tower, the East Tower, the entire convention center, replaced millions of dollars of poor equipment and working conditions, completely revamped the inner workings of the central plant and the operating system of the building, redone multiple restaurants, the entire gaming floor, replaced 30% or 40% of our slot machines, and upgraded our facility to what I think is representative of a Marnell type of gaming operation and something, and I always said this, that the city could be proud of. So I hope at this point that we've met those expectations. However, in that meeting, had lots of discussions, and I, and I might mention too, ever since I've gotten to Sparks, I have had a great working relationship with Jay Witt and Silverwing. I have a lot of respect for what they've done. They are the other party across the street that continually puts their capital at work and takes, take, is taking risk to try to redevelop this area. And regardless of how this comes out and regardless of what he says about me tonight, I'm still going to love him tomorrow. We'll, we'll work our way through this. However, in realizing what was going across the street and the contention that was there prior to our arrival, it was our goal, once we understood it, to come to the table and try to figure out a solution where both sides of the street would benefit. And that, that came to us approximately a year ago, that the only solution to allow them to move forward with what they needed to do to finish out that development that was owned by Sparks Nugget property was to purchase the Bourbon, the Bourbon Square. I won't give you the exact numbers on our purchase and what we sold the property before for to Silverwing, but on that trade, we lost $3 million. And we knew though that we were, we were taking a financial hit, but it was for the betterment of what we were all trying to accomplish. Anywhere I have ever been, anywhere I've ever developed, and anywhere I've ever operated, my intent is that all boats rise. It is not our intent to do just what we want to do for the betterment of us. It's try to bring better things to the community in Laughlin, whether it was the event centers that we've built there, taking over the River Regatta and cleaning that up and bringing a safe and healthy, fun float that was organized and managed. And we know how to deal with large populations of people. Keep it clean, keep it safe, get it done, drive economy, keep jobs, and then, and then move on. Currently, we have experienced operating a facility that's 3,000 seats larger than this, and we're close to 40 events under our belt over the last five years. So this is not, not necessarily something that's a new idea. So now I'll get into our presentation. The Nugget Event Center, and a lot of this you've already heard, so I'll, I'll go quickly. If you want to stop me, please just smack me. It's 8,500-seat venue. It's a state-of-the-art facility. It's far more advanced than the one that we had built in Laughlin as far as the equipment, the seating, back seating, et cetera, with a, with a new design. We would like to open it in June of 19. I understand that this is a quick schedule. I understand that it's moving fast. We want everybody to be comfortable, but I think that we feel comfortable that, that the time is now. The goal here was to draw thousands of people to the downtown district of what we're, and try to drive the Sparks economy. As I looked at this whole thing and what we were developing and planning, you know, we need to do something that's a game changer. There's a massive entertainment market in this region. Right now, all of that economy is going either somewhere downtown, it's going somewhere to the convention center, or it's going to Lake Tahoe. And this is economy that are people that live within a mile of, of our downtown. And this is economy that are people that live within a mile of, of our downtown area that are leaving us to go elsewhere because we can't provide the same, the same value. Uh, I believe, uh, you've already seen the map. So I guess I'll go to the screen now. I'll address the layout and some of the concerns with the layout. We have addressed the layout. We have listened to, to Sparks Police as far as exiting and provided larger exits to the, to the, uh, to the north. The reason that the, the stadium fits this way is it either fits facing, uh, east or facing west. One is because the entry has to be to the side of the stadium. We cannot enter people, obviously, from the stage, and we could not enter people from the back. So part two is, if you turn this, it won't fit. So unless, I guess we could maybe figure out a way where we could get some Tenth Street and some of Victorian Plaza, and it, but it, in order for these things to scale, to bring you A-plus entertainment and not B or C entertainment, we have to be at the eighty-five hundred seats. Uh, we started off, the, the first one we did at ninety-five hundred seats and found it, uh, it found it worked better at eleven, eleven thousand five hundred. The reason I think it works different here is that the price points here will be slightly above what they are in the Laughlin market. Uh, and lastly, we were concerned if we faced it south, that the lights from the stage would have an effect on the freeway. And you are all very diligent about making sure our sign doesn't have any moving lights on it, moving video that's right next to the IE. So those were the three major factors. The proposed utilization is C five to six headliners a year. The names that we're putting up here are names that we have done business with. They're names that we know we can get. They're names that want to come to the market. Toby Keith, Hank Williams, Lady Annabellum, Reba, Luke Bryant, Journey. Uh, we got a call tonight that we might even be able to, uh, secure like a Lionel Richie. So different genres. We're, we're not, I don't think we're going into young boom, 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 that would create that, because that's not, that's not the customer, that's not the market. Uh, we would use this special event site for the Star Spangled Sparks, Hot August Nights, Rib Cookoff, uh, the Southern Fair on the Square, and try to enhance the downtown experience. As a part of the discussion, as we were going through this process, though, um, there's lots of other things that we can do that we have done in the past. We can do rodeo, bull riding, or equestrian events in this. We, if we remove all this, the seating on the floor, it still gives us four thousand seats. Uh, the seating is designed to be movable and stackable to allow these events. We bring in the dirt. We have the rodeo. Uh, they're positive experience. We can do extreme sports, which would be skateboarding, um, the, the bikes. In one of our meetings, somebody had talked about putting in a, an ice skating rink in the wintertime, so people can come down, have a place to, to enjoy, to, to, to skate outside. You can do high school, college graduations, fundraisers. Uh, and I, what I, what I would offer, and it's not, uh, it's not a disingenuous gesture, our, our money is being spent and will be made with the concerts, five or six events a year, uh, and help ease the, the restrictions that are on Victorian Avenue to get ribs and those types of things into an area and not compact the street. And that was why we got out of Victorian Square, so it could be developed, and we moved down to the side. Uh, and I've said this to the city when we, when we met, uh, in different meetings with staff, the city can use this. This is, it had no cost. There, there's no, um, and so can the developer. Uh, we want this to be something that everybody can use to drive their initiatives. We just have our, our six, five to six nights a year and our special event weekends. After that, we have no use for this site and what we're building. Uh, so we're building it strictly on those economics, and if other people can find benefit in it and bring things down to the city, it's theirs to use at no charge. All they have to do is ensure it and secure it, and it's their, it's theirs to, to make things, to make things go. Uh, parking, I think that we, you've heard about parking. You probably understand. I believe we have plenty of parking in the existing Nugget. Uh, on the majority of weekends, even at full capacity at the hotel, there's plenty of excess parking on the site. The traffic plan, uh, and I'll just jump here to the actual, uh, graphic. You see the hashed red mark? That is the, the proposed areas that would be shut down, so, uh, residents can still access their, uh, their homes on Victorian Plaza, uh, or they can come in through C Street. Uh, this is for safety, is to get people in, get people out. Majority of the people will come from this parking garage, uh, or the parking structures over at the Nugget. The acoustical, the acoustical seems to be the number one issue here. I have never committed that this was going to be a quiet experience. Um, I, I fully expect that this is to be a vibrant and, but I think people need to understand how stadium works. We're not looking at a, and I, and I, I respect the, the request for continuance. However, a, a, another sound consultant is going to tell you, we're looking at a hundred to a hundred and D, DB, a hundred and, to a hundred and ten DB at the actual soundboard. But please understand how a concert works. It doesn't ride at a hundred and D, a hundred and ten DB for two hours straight. Okay? The crowd is quiet, the entertainers entertain, they have apex moments, and there's about seven minutes total in a concert that has above a hundred DB. So it's not a hundred DB for two hours straight. Um, and when you're dealing with outdoor amphitheaters, the sound dissipates far greater than you would actually think it does. It's not like being indoor. However, I concur and fully agree that this is not going to be a quiet experience. Uh, and I would also point out that anything that we do, the, the, the crowd, the, I'm sorry, the town, the residents are going to have at least four months, if not six months notice. It's not like they're going to come home one night and there's going to be Toby Keith in their backyard. And to the contrary, the alternate argument here is, I actually thought this would be pretty cool if I lived in that apartment, that I could watch that show, uh, or be in that experience. Uh, and I think that there are people that will probably see it that way, and there are probably people that will see it the opposite. There, there's no question about that. But I believe that there is a person that will see this as a positive, and it's not all negative. Uh, this was the sound, uh, contour map that was done, uh, that shows the impact, uh, on the building, the, the Bridges building. Your, uh, staff has the, the more detailed study and the questions and the answers. Uh, we did do an extensive lighting study, uh, to understand how the lights and how we can control the lights to the stadium, both, both in just surround lighting for safety, uh, as well as, uh, lighting from the actual concert. Uh, and I believe that we have the proper amount of lighting, and I don't think you'll experience, based on the study, uh, a tremendous amount of lighting that will spill outside the stadium. Sanitation concerns, we have done this, uh, a number of different ways. Uh, the, two days to clean up the site is ridiculous. I wouldn't agree to that. The site needs to be cleaned up, uh, that evening or the next morning, as soon as the residents are fine with dealing with that. It's not a noisy experience. It's quiet, but the site will be cleaned up by the next morning in any event that we do. Uh, and as far as the portable bathrooms, uh, it was our intent to leave the portable bathrooms there for the season and then remove them. If you want them brought in and removed after every show, totally fine with that, too. Uh, and the bathrooms will be cleaned the following morning, uh, so we didn't have trucks in there after ten o'clock. We really understood and respect, if we do get special use permit and approval for this project, that at ten o'clock, that's it. It's over, and the crowd has to start to dissipate and, uh, get back to, uh, a quiet area. Like I said earlier, we have extensive experience with these, uh, concerts and, and both working with Sparks, uh, here, uh, Sparks PD, as well as Metro and Laughlin, um, have a lot of experience with crowd control. Uh, we will hire the right qualified people, uh, to assist us in that. We will work with Sparks Police and Fire to make sure it's done, uh, with every level of care that it needs to be. We do require bag checks and have metal detectors at our, our venues, uh, and we will hire the appropriate, uh, REMS of personnel for all potential medical needs. Usually in a concert like this, we have two ambulances and a medical tent, but if it needs to be more, uh, we've dealt with that as we deal with Sparks and the heat and what's, what's going on. So it's not something new to us, uh, and this is when we err on the side of caution. If we are approved through this, we do plan on opening the, the stadium, uh, in June of, of this summer. And I would open it now to any questions that you may have of me or anybody on my staff that can, is, I don't have the technical expertise to answer the question.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and if there's any requests to speak, and then after that, we'll bring it back to the Commission, uh, to see if anybody has any questions. So appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Any requests to speak? Thank you. Mr. Jay Witt?
Madam Chairman, uh, Members of the Planning Commission, I am Jay Witt, Silverwing Development. Fortunately, I'm limited to three minutes, so I'll try to wrap, wrap this up quickly. Uh, in the three minutes I'm allowed, I'd like to first ask you to review the December third memo I provided to you, with particular attention to the vagrancy concerns, um, and, and proactive actions that could be taken to prevent the problem. The open-air facility will become a magnet for, for homeless and illegal activities when it, if, if it's vacant and if it's not lit and secured properly. Uh, if, if it, if, if, if that cannot be, uh, if allowed to be, um, to be, to be unsecured, unsecured and not properly lit, uh, during large periods of time, we would expect, um, criminal activity and the future represent, uh, reputation of the Square will be severely impaired. Uh, but my main concern is, as Anthony has mentioned, it ties back to the sound mitigation, or I should say, the lack of sound mitigation. Um, the, with the, the consideration for the, for the immediate neighbors who are incurring interior sound levels that we calculate to be, and I'll get to it in a second, about eight hundred percent higher than the, the industry standard for interior residents, which is forty-five decibels. Uh, this conclusion is reached by using the applicant's sound study and adjusting the sound from ninety up to a hundred and ten. And I, I, I would welcome you all, just look on the web, and you're going to have a consultant look at this, but you'll see the rock, the, the recent, um, study by Purdue and, and Temple University, you'll see that, um, that rock, um, uh, type, um, venues outdoor typically a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. The numbers you see that have been provided by the applicant are based by ninety. So when you basically kick that up, I mean, I'm not just kicking it up to twenty, uh, the results are about eight hundred percent higher than what's acceptable on an interior, to interior residential space. That does not include peak periods. Peak periods could go up to two hundred decibels. Uh, so we're, we're not even going to try to mitigate peak periods, but we, I'm just speaking about the normal sound base that the, uh, could, the mixing booth is going to be targeting. So the reason why there are no limits on sound, on, on sound levels, which is the most harmful of all the project impacts, in our view, is the city attorney has suggested the code section of special events be the basis for the CUP, um, as, as special events allow unrestricted sound levels with appropriate mitigation when needed. Uh, however, the problem which, uh, with this is the city, uh, if you find with your own definition of a special event, for the city's code, a special event is defined as, and I'm quoting, "A planned gathering that takes place on public land and streets." So, so the events gathering is to be on public land, which, that's the end of the story. There's no allowance for an event being given for the exemption, um, on sound if it was placed in a permanent venue on private property, not public property. Uh, ha- half of our existing tenants work on four ten-hour shifts, uh, at the Tesla Panasonic facility. Many get up at three or four o'clock in the morning. Uh, they work four out of seven days a week. Who will be compensating us for the lesson?
No, if you'll just, go ahead and finish your thought.
Occupancy and lower rents. The situation absent, um, mitigation constitutes an obvious public nuisance and inverse condemnation, and we fully expect to preserve our rights if the sound is not properly mitigated. With a diminished appeal in living in Victorian Square as a result of the unmitigated rocking and sound levels of any rap beats, which, uh, so, I, Anthony suggests will not be the case, um, which, which would be great, uh, our values will decline, and our ability to continue the development, uh, will, will be brought to a halt. Uh, the, the risks are simply getting, getting too large. Uh, I take considerable personal liability on every development, and as a Senator tonight, I could tell you, without a collaborative effort to materially, I mean materially, reduce sound levels entering the residences, um, we, we made, we, we made the formal decision, uh, with our partner to, um, to halt our development in the area. Sound mitigation can be accomplished in a number of different ways. I'm sure your consultant will come up with some. Uh, that you could do a five-story concrete wall stranded facility, so our wood frame residential walls are not the direct target, uh, of the venue's devastating sound impact. We're limiting the venue's sound amplification, so our residents' lives are not disrupted within their units. Um, lastly, you reorientate the stage, um, facing south, as the site is almost perfectly square, except for a small public area in the southeast corner that could be used by the applicant, so no material change of CCAT would occur. If you look at the layout, you'll see, uh, it, it looks elongated, but most of that is plaza to the south. Um, with that, I just appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Uh, are there any other requests to speak? Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public. Yes, Mr. Wagner. That's quite all right. Go ahead and come up, Mr. Wagner, and then when you're done, if you'll please fill out a form, that would be great. Thank you.
My questions are sanitation. For example, if they keep the sanitation things there, they're going to either lock them or, I don't know what they're going to do with them. If they leave them on-site, I would suggest that they take them off-site each time. That's, that, that really is a very big concern. The other thing I'd love to know, I'd love to hear a hundred decibels, what the sound would be like. I don't have a clue what it would be like. Maybe they could demonstrate it somewhere, I don't know. But those are the things that I'm very concerned about, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, if you can put your name on the record, please, for us?
Go do that. I can't wait.
No, you need to say it first before you sign in. You didn't, you didn't, uh...
I'll put my, oh, my name is, you want my name?
Yes, name and address, please.
Phil Wagner, and I live in Sparks, and hello to the Madam Chair and all the count...
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
If you'll fill out a form, thank you. Are there any other requests to speak before I close the public hearing? Can I close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission? Uh, anybody have any questions, comments? Where do we want to start? Commissioner Peterson?
You know, I don't know how many of us have ever had an event of this magnitude come before, before. It hasn't been my top study of amphitheaters, outdoor amphitheaters. It has its pluses and minuses, as far as I'm concerned. However, on this particular deal, and I'm not too sure they've dealt with it very much, that's probably why they want a continuance. I would like to have more of staff's input. If they don't feel comfortable making a recommendation for us, I think we ought to give them contingency a time to dot all their i's and cross all their t's, so they can come up with a comfortable recommendation for us. That's what I feel, because I'd like to see the recommendation, and then I can work off of that. And I think we all do that on this Commission. I review.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I like Commissioner Peterson. I have a few questions, um, concerning the sound study and like to see some more additional information. I'd support a continuance, and I suppose I could hold off on my, my noise questions. I did have a question for staff in terms of administration of this permit and the relationship between, um, or this conditional use permit, if it's approved, and individual special event, event permits. I guess where I'm going, going with this is, if a, if a complaint comes in about noise or about lighting or, um, how would that, how would that be, be addressed between planning and, and our special events office?
Commissioner Carey, uh, so the, the, the process would be one of, um, like I said during my report, is it, it is an iterative process through the special events permit. And, and if there are comments, concerns, complaints that are heard, uh, the initial response would be, okay, next time we, we get a special events permit request, we'll, we'll look at that, that issue, and what can we do to mitigate it? If that is a, a, a chronic problem per se, then we would take, um, action through the conditional use permit process and potentially start talking about rescinding a, a conditional use permit. But that would be after, you know, it's been shown that we've gone through that process, that iterative, um, case-by-case process of, can we mitigate those issues, um, through the special event permit? And, and if that proves to be something we can't do, then we'd have to approach it from the other side.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a good working relationship, and I, I guess the request I would like to make before, you know, if we see this thing again, is, um, maybe, maybe kind of a written breakdown of each one of the individual responsibilities between planning department and, and special events office in terms of who's, who's responsible for administering each sort of the, the, the major, major impact, because they don't want... Because I don't want to make, you know, this is, I just don't want it to get slipped through the cracks if we get a complaint. I think there's some, you know, unique conditions of approval, part of this conditional use permit that, you know, we normally don't see on this commission or enforced by the planning department. I think there could be some unique event permit issues that could arise. I just don't want to see it. I just don't want to wrap my head around it. And the last question I had for staff was concerning condition number seven. That's the one that talks about police and fire chiefs would review the egress plan prior to issuance of a building permit. The question I have is, is that a one-time review? You know, essentially, the applicant would submit an egress plan, and the fence would be built, or would there be an egress plan developed for each special event?
So I think there would be a master egress plan that would be reviewed and approved by the fire and police chiefs prior to the issuance of a building permit, very specifically for the fence. You know, that's kind of a major mitigating factor of how can people get in and out is that fencing. And so the police chief had some specific ideas that he'd kind of talked about, but nothing was laid down specifically. And so the applicant, they've already started to work with them to try to show bigger, more openings, and they'll have to continue to work with the police chief to make sure he's happy with that. I think, though, beyond that, as the police and fire are both involved with special event permits, if there is specifically an issue that comes up, hey, when we've had the last event, we had an issue, not necessarily, hopefully, ever a mass evacuation issue, but hey, we had an issue where we were having some sort of, you know, egress issue that we think we could address by adjusting something, I would assume that there would be some back and forth, some working with the police and fire chiefs to get that addressed, since they're the ones approving your permit to be able, or not be able, to have that as special event.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. The concern that I have is our police and fire chiefs, they're the experts on this matter. I just want to make sure that they have every opportunity to review and make, you know, make comments on any sort of event that could happen at this venue, you know, as many opportunities as they deem necessary. I don't know if the way condition number seven is kind of written, if that's restrictive or not, but it's good to hear, you know, your answer on that.
Yeah, we would have to have, you know, kind of a line in the sand of, you know, when are we going to require that they have it submitted, approved, and permitted? We can't, through the conditional use permit process, condition the way that they're going to do every single special event permit that's outside of your jurisdiction, so to speak. But by saying, hey, you have to have it approved when you do a building permit, we can get that far. And then, like I said, that iterative process of special event permit re-review every time one comes in, that allows them to fine-tune that approach as they see potential issues come up through different events.
Thank you. Mr. Arnellis, he's going, Commissioner Carey, he's going to have some additional...
Madam Chair, Armand Arnellis here, addressing Commissioner Carey's previous question. So maybe the way to look at this is that the conditional use permit allows for the development of this facility. It's an events facility. There are any number of events that could be held within the confines, if you will, of, or Chapter 9.42. There are events, concerts specifically, a large concert specifically, that are contemplated that would be permitted through the events process in large measure, because they will require closure of streets and because they will require city services. So when we issue a special event permit, and we do this with all of the existing special events, they're reviewed every year, there, you know, there's changes made to the permit in terms of conditions and restrictions, et cetera. And, you know, there's, depending on that experience over time with each subsequent event, those conditions and restrictions may change. The ultimate hammer, frankly, is that if, you know, this becomes an issue such that the city determines that it doesn't want it, or, you know, for solid reasons, issue any more special events permits, then, you know, then the facility would be limited to operating within the constraints of Chapter 9.42. You know, barring amendment of the code to change Chapter 9.42. So I hope maybe that addresses your question.
I think it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reed.
I, to support a continuance, I'd like to hear more about the acoustical issues. But I did have one concern. You're talking about, this is to the applicant, doing, or to staff, doing these venues, these concerts during other venues, so, and how parking is going to be. So if you do a concert during the Rib Cook-Off when parking is already really tightly constrained, how are you adjusting that for the additional parking you're going to need for your headliner show?
We wouldn't do that. I think that would be irresponsible. So, I mean, we currently, to answer a couple of the thoughts here, if you want to know what 100 dB sounds like, go to Ribs. That's what it sounds like in Rib Village. That's 100 dB. And if you stand inside the Nugget Building, you can hardly hear it. So I don't agree with the 800% increase in sound. 50 dB is ambient, 100 dB would be 100% increase. So I'm not sure about 800%. I don't know where that fuzzy math comes from. But we would not do a concert of 8,500 and Ribs. And if you're, you know, if you're living in here and you bought into this apartment, my concerts are going to be really nice compared to seven days of Ribs or five days of Ribs setup, regardless of the time they end. I mean, that Ribs is a whole event in itself. So we would never compound the two. Did that answer your question?
Well, it's just that you had said that your proposed utilization would be used during special events, such as, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying.
Got it. So if you remember Victorian Square, how we used to use that, along the parcels that we owned all the way back to the theater. The idea there was to vacate that property so Jay could develop it out and finish his vision of what he wanted to do. If we were to do that, Ribs would have had to stop operating, because there was no place to, no property to replace what was going on inside of Victorian Square. So what we did was laid out a map with the use of Bourbon, Bourbon Property, now hopefully an event center, where we can replace some of those functions that were in Victorian Square inside of the new stadium. I think what people get confused on when they look at the stadium is the seating on the ground doesn't stay. It's mobile seating. It's built to drop in and remove and truck away. So we can take all that seating out, take it to our warehouse, and have a flat surface there where we can put a venue inside where people can mill in and around and experience a couple Rib Cookers if you wanted to do that, or a tent and a bar. But it wouldn't be Ribs and 8,500-seat concert. The site can't hold that, and Victorian can't hold that.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
That clarifies that.
Commissioner Fuehens?
Madam Chair, got one for the applicant and the staff. Ian, we heard public comment today that special events are on public land. Is there any currently, any history of public events or special event permits for private land?
Typically, you would not. However, the special event permit is, would be required due to the fact that there would be necessary street closures. That necessary street closures with access and egress from this site going through the public right-of-way on Victorian would necessitate a special events permit, just by the nature of the fact that the streets would have to close. Did I answer that?
Yep. And, you know, I, when I look at this, this is for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
This is, I mean, absolutely exciting to have an outdoor, or any kind of venue that's in our region, especially in our area and our town. You know, it's exciting. And what I'm mainly concerned about is when, when we're talking about a conditional use permit and working with areas that are already there, what are you going to overly kind of work on doing so you're not overly disruptive to those, you know, the residuals to the west? And I've seen what you've, heard what you've said so far, and I see that. So my question would be, how many seats are you going to lose if you move it to the north? Do you know how many seats? I would like to know that. If this does get continued, that's information that I would like to know. Yeah, it goes down to 7,000. We wouldn't do it. It's not viable, because we can't go out and pay $500,000 for Class A entertainment, 1,500 seats short. Average ticket price is $60, $70. You know, you lose 110,000 of revenue, but you have to pay the same amount of money every show would cost. You know, these shows either break even or lose a little. They don't make a tremendous amount, so you would be losing. And the Nugget itself doesn't have the room base to make up for that loss. To promote a casino event at $100,000 loss right out of the gate is not economically viable. Okay, are you working with the... It wouldn't make a difference if you look at the sound study. If you look at how the sound bleeds out, what the sound study said was that the exterior of that building was going to be 90 dB, a 25, roughly 20 or 25 above ambient. 20 above ambient. Ambient's 50. So inside of your home, directly to the west, you would hear the concert at 70 dB. If you want to know what that sounds like, stay in the East Tower of the Nugget and listen to the I-80 road noise, because it is 70 dB. It's not as big of a thing, I think, as we're making it out to be. So 100 to 110 dB is at the sound panel. That means the soundboard that's directly in front of the stage. All that sound then hits 4,000 people, and then it echoes further to the side of a building where it's 90 dB. And then after it gets through all of the insulation and drywall and two-by-fours inside your home, it would be 70 dB, which is about 40% above ambient, not 800. So I just think that you need to read the, I would recommend to read the sound study on how it lays out how sound really carries. And sound engineers are famous for never agreeing with each other. This will not conclude itself on the 20th of December, nor on the January 3rd, by a third sound study, because it will say something completely different. I've done this for a very long time on high-impact buildings, and they just, they never seem to agree how sound really transmits. So I, the mitigation measures are out there. It's not reasonable to build a dB curtain wall or a five-story concrete wall. That would really make it ugly, number one. I don't think you want this thing that looks like a five-story-high concrete wall all the way around this in the middle of the city, and it just wouldn't be economically viable. The way we usually have dealt with the public on these things is we offer them, we offer them something of benefit to this. And I wasn't able to talk to Jay at the last commission, planning commission meeting that I came and attended, been talking to his guys. The way we would address this is we would go to the residents, and I'll offer this in the public, the residents that are in that building, I'll give you two tickets to every concert for free. Come join in on the party. This is no different than Green Valley Ranch and the district in Henderson. There is live music every Friday and Saturday night. The Elephant Bar is ripping and roaring. There are hundreds of people that live directly above it, and they all come down, embrace it, and enjoy it. And I understand that it's, who was here first and people knowing what they're getting into. But the way we would usually do that is invite the public to enjoy it, give them some value, make it a special experience for them. But there's not, and I also am open, I didn't get to tell this to Jay, but I was open to looking, I sent him some specifications on sound curtains that we're currently using in the East Tower of the Nugget, because the road noise is so bad off of the I-80 with those old windows. It's 70 dB in that room. We were able to see 10 to 15 dB reduction just by using a $250 curtain. The other thing is, I was open to talking with Jay. Jay and I haven't talked, so I don't, I wouldn't want to say that I've talked to him, but I was talking to his guy. I'm open to looking at doing some acoustical work inside of those units as far as interior work in the walls to try to mitigate it further back, as long as it's reasonable and it doesn't become, with all due respect, a stick-up. You know, if it's $100,000 of work to make those walls better for those residents, I'm in on something like that. I would do something like that. So I think it's, the mitigation is all of the above. Put in the right curtains, do some acoustical wall mitigation, and say, hey, as a part of this unit, you get $200 tickets to six shows. It's $1,200 of value. If you don't want them, sell them. If you want them, come on down to the show, and what a cool place to live. I get to go experience an ice skating rink. I get to see Toby Keith. I can't go this weekend, I can sell them. We're open to all kinds of things that embrace the public and the people that are around this. You had mentioned your Loughlin property a little bit. Where is that in location to your... It's separate. It's not near any residential units. It's separate. It's up on a hill. But I have been to numerous concerts, and my guys have been to all of them. And when you're behind the soundboard by 100 feet, I can sit here and have this kind of conversation with you. The sound dissipates in an open-air study, and I had invited staff to come see the last one, which would be the worst one, which was Kid Rock, because he's as loud as they get. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make it to that. But you can sit all the way, and that's why we put the VIP suites behind the soundboard by 100 feet, because VIPs don't like to usually sit up front and scream at each other. They like to sit back and be able to talk. And as the farther you get up the stadium, it works. It's going to be loud, but it works. It's not going to be ear-piercing. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners have any other... Commissioner Brock?
This is for the applicant. Also, when public comment came up with regards to security of the venue...
Yeah, I'm not, we will secure the site just like we currently secure Bourbon. You know, we don't have any vagrancy problems in Bourbon Street. We've owned that for a year. It's chain-linked. You can't get in it. We have our security secure it. I don't understand where vagrancy concerns can come from. Vagrancy concerns come from a building that's to the west of all of us, and I won't bring the name up. So it doesn't happen at Bourbon. So I'm more than happy to agree to any condition to make sure the site, if you need a bike officer that goes around it, you know, every 60 minutes, we are, I think, equally, if not more, on board with Jay about vagrancy in this area and trying to clean it up. So any condition that you want to impose to secure that site, we have no problem with.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I just have one question of the applicant. Is your Loughlin Center open-air, like you're proposing here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Did you ever look at an enclosed for sound mitigation?
Couldn't afford it.
Okay. All right. I think that's about it.
Yeah, you're looking at, it's two and a half acres. That's 100,000 feet. To enclose the building would be $30 million.
Okay.
$300 a foot for warehouse type, 50 feet in the air.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. With that, thank you both.
Pleasure.
Appreciate you answering. Yes, Mr. Arnellis?
Madam Chair and members of the planning commission, just a couple of comments and maybe suggestions to you in terms of any direction you may want to give staff if you're in fact going to continue this item to a future meeting. One, you know, the first is a comment. I mean, I think to Mr. Marnell's point, we're not looking to conduct a third sound study, per se. What we're looking to do is to have, retain someone that will advise staff in terms of the study that's been presented, in terms of its reasonableness, in terms of regarding its assumptions and the methodology and its conclusions. We're looking to be able to better understand and explain to you what, you know, 100 decibels versus some other volume level means in terms of, in terms that you can understand and we can understand. So that's a point. Second, in terms of any of the particular conditions or mitigations that you may be interested in having staff evaluate in particular, we would certainly appreciate any comments you have in that regard. And I think, to get back to where I started in my initial comments, I think probably January 3rd is the appropriate date. I don't believe that two weeks would be sufficient time. I don't want to extend this out much past January 3rd either, so if the commission is agreeable to that, that would be the date that I would suggest.
Thank you. All right. Do any of the commissioners have any suggestions that they would like to direct staff? Is there additional information that you'd like to see or things like that? So if I can get some feedback on that, I'd really appreciate it. Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd reiterate my request I made in my questioning to staff. I'd like to see a written printout of the roles and responsibilities in terms of, you know, administering the conditional use permit and the... administering the conditional use permit and the special event permit. Who's responsible for what with any of the, you know, the potential impacts from the proposed conditional use? I'd also like to have staff and their third-party review of the sound study to get some information about vibrations in buildings from sound. I've heard from a few members of the public, kind of wondering, you know, talking to them, okay, 80 decibels, 90 decibels. What does that mean in terms of building vibrations? And would their windows or plates on the wall rattle? I'd kind of like to see some information about that. And along those same... I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to see a condition put on there, if possible, that the porta-potties be removed, please. Too many occasions that these porta-potties are left out and then they're violated during early morning hours. Some get slapped in, some get set afire. I'd like them removed if that could be a condition, please.
Anyone else? Commissioner Fueens?
Commissioner Fueens, you know, with two of the...
Could you turn your mic on, please?
So got two great businesses here in downtown Sparks that are trying to do a great thing. I would like to have, maybe by the January 3rd meeting, some togetherness brought forced a little bit more than what we're seeing here. You know, we... Seems like we have little apples and oranges right now, and I'd like to see if we can make some apple and orange juice together. And that seems like would be just great for... Make our decision a lot easier if the two parties can gather together on the property to the west. I would like to know just also, because of what happened down in Las Vegas about a year and a half ago, what kind of roof access there's gonna be on mainly to the Deco project to the east? Or if anything, that is above the... Essentially, so if there's an active shooter of whether... What kind of roof access?
Anyone else have anything?
I would like to request... I realize that we're not requiring the sewer study until a little later on. And since that's at the forefront with a lot of things right now, so far as sewer capacity and things like that, I would like to have it addressed as far as timeframe and things like that as to, are we going to have sewer capacity, or how long is it going to take, or things like that? So I just want to make sure we have that.
I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out how to come up here and ask a question.
Go right ahead.
Commissioner Fueens, just for clarification, you had asked questions about roof access. Are you regarding roof access to the general public or roof access to our police force? Because...
General public.
Okay, general public?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the roof access of areas that are gonna be above this crowd. So as we don't have similar that happened in the concert.
Sure.
In Las Vegas.
And then, I'm sorry, because I was thinking about that and coming up here. You'd ask about sewer capacity. You said you were looking for that information sooner than when they were looking to...
Well, I just... Do we have the ability to give them well-served when they're ready to put... When they're ready to hook up to sewer? Because my concern is, is how long are we gonna use sani huts? You know? So how many years after we have this up is it only gonna be for a season or something like that until we get proper facilities in?
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Fueens?
I move to continue the consideration of conditional use permit CU 18-0013 associated with PCN 18-0057 to the Planning Commission meeting scheduled for date certain January 3rd, 2019.
Commissioner Reed, second. Okay, I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to PCN 17-0053. Consideration and possible action on a request to amend the Stone Brook final design standards.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, and Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. This quest is to amend the Stone Brook final design standards and regulation to move and reallocate their acreage designated for various residential, commercial, and business park land use categories, and also modify the associated development standards for an approximately 610-acre site, which is zoned new urban district. The zoning generally located... It's this property here. It's kind of horseshoe-shaped. Here's Pyramid Highway and La Pasada. So it's essentially the southeast corner of Pyramid Highway or Pyramid Way and La Pasada. This request is to amend the final approved Stone Brook Design Standards Regulation. The proposed amendments include, as a summary, to change the land uses in the handbook to match the approved comprehensive plan, the land use designations. Update the land use summary and density tables. Remove references to the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan, or as most of us call it, the NSSOI, which is no longer in effect. Update the phasing section of the handbook incorporating the current development. Consolidate the two neighborhood parks into a community park in accordance with the current Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and also administrative changes throughout the document. The final Stone Brook Design Standards and Regulation was approved by City Council in the year 2006. There have been two phases of single-family homes approved on the eastern portion of Stone Brook for a total of 1,760 single-family lots, which are under construction. And in this area, you can see some of them already lauded. The next map is the comp plan land uses that was approved this fall by this Planning Commission and City Council certified it. This map shows the land uses along Pyramid Way is approved by the comp plan and also the two five-acre sites. The next map is what the applicant's proposing in the handbook. They are updating the land uses that are on the western side here, but they are proposing to consolidate the two five-acre lots into a 17-acre community park, which would be located along La Pasada. The comp plan does allow parks in the open space, so they wouldn't have to... It does not affect the comprehensive plan land use. The proposed amendment moves and reallocates the acreages designated for various residential, commercial, and business park land uses on the western portion of the Stone Brook in conformance with the recently approved comprehensive plan. This amendment does not change the total number of use, which is approved in the handbook, which is 2,135 units, nor does it change any densities on the land uses in the handbook. Addressing the 10 findings to make one review in a proposed modification to a final approved plan for plan development. The first one, A, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. Approval of this amendment will bring the land uses in conformance with the comprehensive plan amendment approved by Planning Commission and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. The consolidation of the two neighborhood parks into a community park complies with the Parks Department Master Plan policy. This amendment supports goal MG1, goal MG2, policy MG1, goal H2, policy H2, and policy CF, because it provides for non-residential land uses, has a mix of land uses, and has three types of residential land uses. The Stone Brook Plan Development was approved in 2006 and has been included in the utility and facility planning for this region since that time. The Stone Brook property is located within the impact fee service area, number one. And as development occurs, impact fees will be collected for sanitary sewer, storm drain improvements, the sixth fire station, and the regional parks, which supports policy CF1. Addressing finding B, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses. The lands to the north and west are under Washoe County jurisdiction, with the intersection of La Pasada and Pyramid Way serving as a commercial node. To the south is Tierra del Sol Plan Development and also the Lazy Five Regional Park. The proposed amendments do not change the type of land uses within the plan development and will not materially alter the relationship between the western and eastern portion of the Stone Brook Plan Development, nor the surrounding properties. Addressing finding C, which is a positive fiscal impact to the city. A fiscal impact analysis was not required with this amendment and was addressed with the review of the comprehensive plan amendment. The plan development, based on that fiscal impact that was submitted with the comprehensive plan amendment, will produce a positive fiscal impact over a 20-year period of approximately $1 million. Addressing finding D, which further the mutual interests of the residents and owners of the plan development. Stone Brook has a single-family homes under construction on the eastern half of the plan development, but there are no residents residing or businesses within Stone Brook. The proposed amendment relocates the land uses on the western side of Stone Brook and are intended to facilitate development in a manner consistent with the original intent of the plan. Addressing finding E, not impair the reasonable reliance by the residents or owners within the plan. There are currently no residents or businesses within Stone Brook, so the amendment would not impair any residents or owners' reliance on the provisions of the approved handbook. Finding F, not result in changes adversely affecting the public interest. The proposed changes are intended to facilitate development of multifamily, commercial, and business park uses on the western portion or part of Stone Brook. The proposed changes are anticipated to have a limited impact on the future owners within or the properties surrounding Stone Brook. Addressing finding G, which is consistent with the efficient development and preservation of the entire plan development. The proposed handbook does not change the type of land uses or the density, nor does it increase the maximum number of residential units. Addressing finding H, not adversely affect the enjoyment of land budding upon or across the street from the plan development. Stone Brook's single-family residential remains on the eastern portion of the plan development, while the multifamily residential, commercial, and business park remain adjacent to Pyramid Way on the western side of the plan development. The land use pattern and street network are generally the same as originally approved in 2006. Addressing finding I, which does not grant solely to confer a private benefit. The amendment is a logical reorganization, which is in the public interest, and thus, proposed amendments will not solely confer a private benefit to any person. Addressing finding J, the last one. Public notice. Notice was given by, per the Sparks Municipal Code and also Nevada revised statutes. 534 property owners were noticed or mailed notices, and public notice was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on November 21st, 2018. I did receive a comment, which I failed to mention to you, that I handed out to you on Tuesday from a property owner that lives across the street somewhere over in this general area. They were concerned about noise, a sound wall. First of all, this property over here is within the county, and also, the city of Sparks does not construct sound walls to address their concerns. That staff does believe that the Planning Commission can make all 10 of these findings and recommends the Planning Commission forward approval to the City Council. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Danny Drilling with Wood Rogers. I'll keep my remarks brief. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation. Largely, this is a cleanup measure to be more reflective of the recently adopted comprehensive plan changes as well as to be reflective of recently, or well, past approved tentative maps and final maps as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing. And do we have any requests to speak? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, if I may.
You sure may.
I move to forward to the City Council a recommendation of approval of the request to amend the Stony Brook Design Standards and Regulations, PCN 17-0053, based on the findings A through J and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Commissioner Reed, second. Okay, I have a first and a second. Is there any further conversation? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll move along to public comment. Do we have any requests to speak? Yes, Mr. King. And also, if you'll fill out another card for us that you spoke on this.
I will do that.
I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Ron King, Ronald King. And I wasn't going to speak during this portion of the public comment, but I felt driven to do so after hearing the Nugget's presentation. I think that I agree that you really need to get educated about what this is all about, what's gonna happen, what the results are gonna be, what the effects are going to be. And I would recommend, having been a concertgoer myself in several amphitheaters around the nation, I would recommend that you get not only just education from people that are considered sound specialists or zoning specialists or whatever, but that in some way, you get people that, from organizations such as the Tua Khan Amphitheater in St. George, Utah, Harvey's Concert Venue, the Red Rock Concert and Events Center in Denver, Colorado. Somehow get input from them as to how people have reacted to it. Because once you get into this, once you get into it, it's gonna be tough to get out of it. And it may not be working. Yes, it's a... As Mr. Fueens said, it is an exciting situation. It's a bold venture, a bold presentation. But it's in the middle of town, and yes, there's gonna be apples and oranges and this and that, for and against. But in the concert venues I've seen, particularly even at Harvey's, where they claim on your tickets and stuff before you go in that it's gonna be directed sound, it's gonna be focused and all of that, there's more people sitting outside of the arena because they can hear it better out there than they can actually hear it in the arena. And that is some of the things that you need, I think, we, you, need to learn about. You really do need to get educated. And I wish that there was a way that you could continue this so that each of you, or part of you, or a committee, could have an opportunity to go to one of these other sites and be a part of what happens at one of those concerts. Many people that I have seen that go to these concerts actually wear sound-dampening headphones because the decibel levels are so high. And I see that happening. Or maybe not. Maybe not. But those are my suggestions, and I think we need to really agree. I agree that you really need to get yourselves educated of what this thing is gonna be all about. Yes, it's bold and probably draw a lot of people. But I think we need to know more. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. So if that's in for public comment, we'll move to comments from the Commissioners. Do we have any?
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson?
You know, the reason why that I was all for the continuous of this, and I want to be... I think it's a good thing, and I think we should need it out there. I'm not saying anything against it. But I think as Commissioners, and there's more facts being sought, that as Commissioners, we owe it to the city of Sparks to let that go forward and be sought out. That was my...
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Any other comments? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to quickly follow up to the request at our study session meeting to bring forth proposed changes to our Planning Commission rules and procedures that would be heard. I think our second meeting in January. I have three. I provided Ms. McCormick an email kind of with my... I, I provided, um, Ms. McCormick, uh, an email kind of with my thoughts for three proposed changes to the rules and procedures. My first one was concerning announcements and committee reports. I was thinking it'd be nice to formalize, um, that, that, that section. I don't know if we've, we've had very many of those reports since I've been on the commission. We either, my, my direction would be to formalize it, that would talk about, you know, the representatives on each one of the committees that are appointed by the commission, or just simply remove that from the agenda. My direction would be to draft both, both, both up for review. My second suggested, um, change would be the process for committee appointments. I know we have a process to appoint members to the Regional Planning Commission. I serve as this commission's representative on the RTC Impact Fee Technical Advisory Committee. I think it'd be good to put some language in our rules and procedures about the terms of, of those offices and how they're appointed and so forth. And then my third, um, suggestion for the rules and procedures is study session. I know we had a good, um, discussion recently about the intent of, of, of study sessions, um, and I, I think it'd be good to put some language in our rules and procedures with respect to study sessions, their intent, their purpose, and what can and cannot, um, happen in those, in those sorts of meetings. Looking through the, through the existing rules and procedures, there's no mention of study sessions, and we have those every, every month. Those are my three suggested, um, changes to the rules and procedures. I'd also, since it's our last meeting in the year, I wanted to extend my appreciation to our staff, the whole Community Services Department staff. You guys have done a great job. Appreciate all of the, all of your, your good work and wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
May I have one more?
Yeah. Commissioner Peterson, of course you can.
Since we're kind of, we're on that, I would like to say that my request for studying the possible of moving the agenda item of reading the minutes, I withdraw that request. It, uh, came across my mind, if it's not broke, don't fix it, and that agenda's been serving pretty good for these last few years, so I, I think I'd like to leave it in that.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
I have one comment. I'd like to welcome our newest commissioner.
Yes, thank you.
Haven't had a chance to, um, meet you, but, yeah, welcome.
Um, I, I would like to make a request. I don't know if it could be done, but, uh, before January 3rd, and it'll actually be maybe a little cold, but, uh, if we could possibly get somehow on that 3rd, uh, up on the bridges in an apartment and have somebody maybe have, uh, prank, put a big stereo and a speaker and let it go about 100 decibels while we're sitting in the apartment.
Are you saying I should speak up louder?
Well, we might be able to kind of get a better idea in an apartment up there if there's, uh, an opportunity to do that.
Okay. Any other? Okay. Uh, with that, I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.